Really hard for me. There's six AM, twelve hour days. So.
Oh, like.
Things on Thursday night, yeah, are kind of hard for me. I'd like to get some rest before I get on the four AM. Work from six to six caring for me, you know, so it's a nurse. I need to be present for them. It's not like I can coast through.
And I'm ready to remember that too, so like.
Yeah.
Well, I think.
I know what I think.
Yeah, it's not a Friday. It's not so that you coasting. This is not a mid.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Oh, we got it.
I'm a long term.
Very straight. Thanks.
I'm frank.
That's our secondary streams.
So that's very creative name.
Okay, I'm glad you're doing that.
Near the hospital.
Okay, thank you.
Should I do the time? I'll form out the time. Okay. Um, the time is now seven forty-two and we will go ahead and get the study session started. Won't go through the formalities of the microphone, but if anyone is watching, would like Spanish Translation Services, just dial seven two zero three eight six nine zero two three. Um, and use code one zero four zero nine one star um to get Spanish Translation Services. Chair.
Do you want to call roll?
Should I? Yeah, can I just go ahead and do that right now? Okay, I didn't know how. A full one we need to do this. Um, I will do a roll call then. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Biltaw. Okay, um, Commissioner, um. Hoskins, Hoskins, President, Commissioner Sanchez, President, Commissioner Van Huisen, President, Commissioner Nelson, President. You have a forum, Chair.
Okay, great.
We really appreciate you all.
Yeah, you don't need a form for this.
You don't.
Thank you, Andrew.
Part of you guys. Thank you. Have a good night.
Put your computer on your desk.
Yes, you can just close it and stick it on there.
Good night, the people getting home.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, let's talk about the minutes. If we just finish up that. Yeah, we can pick up on the minutes.
Sure, um, let me just get my part out real quick. So I was good with approving um the minutes tonight, but I had a suggestion for future. Um, on uh the minutes from the third of September, um, it stated that I had made a motion to deny, which failed for second. But I would have preferred to have the entire motion that I had stated because it gives the reason that I wanted to deny.
Oh, your full motion.
Yeah, so um i- if there are motions of any sort, I think we should capture the entire motion, not just that it was a motion to deny, but motion to deny on what grounds.
Okay.
The other thing that was in there that wasn't in there previously, did didn't note you specifically, but it did note that there wa- there was a negative feeling towards the drive-through. Didn't say that you had made that comment, but at least you could be between the lines saying this is why.
Yeah, Commissioner Van Huisen.
Yeah, that you had made the the motion so the thighs were there, at least you could discern of like.
Yeah, because it's not just that I was like, well, I wanted to deny. It's like I had a specific reason and I stated it in that motion. So I'd like to have that in the future for no matter who does it, just any motion should have the full motion.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And so like tonight, I wasn't going to be like, no, I don't want to approve these minutes because it was an improvement over before and anyone who wants to could go back and look, but um just like.
Okay, good.
There's a point that was brought up actually at the board meeting. It was the call for creation and.
PRG.
PRG groups and one of their members, what they have fallen back to is being very verbose in their motions. So I don't know if we necessarily need to go that way, but it would be if there were points where it's adding some point, maybe this is why the motion is what it is. Or if it's noted through, if it was like a friendly motion to add the discussion points of X, Y, and Z to to the motion. So it doesn't have necessarily been stated verbatim, but it's to those points. That's how they're having to deal with.
Okay, motions are certainly a way to transfer information.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big part of the record.
So I think that's simple enough.
But I, but I think to the length that you all had spelled it out, it was, it was a welcome.
It certainly was, and that's why I wasn't even gonna bring it up with that. I I knew we would meet tonight and I was just gonna make that recommendation for future instead of just saying, all right, I'm gonna stamp my feet and say. I want my words there.
Heather and I talked about it and then we also reached out to staff and the city attorney to discuss how they do city council, but also what their thoughts were on what would be helpful to city council. So we did try to hear from them on what they think would help them in their meetings since that I think was your goal.
And that was the point is that I had heard feedback. It was one of those telephone things. So from previous, previous commissioner combat had actually heard from council member Noble. But there was an issue as there was a case that came before us. It was a split ode and it went in before them. They had no idea why there was a split vote. So was to help inform the city council or if we all move on five years from now, we're not there to ask the question of that there's a written record of why these people made the decision.
And you're the only recommending body to city council.
Yeah.
And so having your minutes be different than the other group's minutes is okay, is what we concluded. Um, so it doesn't mean the rest of the boards and commissions have to have as much um information added to their minutes, just because we're doing it for planning commission.
Yeah, and that makes sense. Makes makes sense.
Okay, very good. Um, so we just tackled one of the things on our work session because we wanted to talk about the minutes tonight. Um, this, the work plan is just a draft for you to consider and this can be um a changeable document. It doesn't have to be fixed. Uh, we just put together some dates for you and some topics for you to tackle here, getting through the end of twenty twenty-four and into the beginning of twenty twenty-five. Um, some of these things are things we need you to do um in terms of your role as uh reviewing the land development code. Um, other things are really more guided toward training and learning opportunities for you as commissioners. Um, we've got some new commissioners and we want to get everybody up to speed. So you had the opportunity to listen to or attend the study session that city council held on October twenty-eighth on Bob's Rules. So if you didn't get a chance to listen to that, go back if you can. Um, there was some good feedback and direction that the city council received from Bob Widener, who drafted Bob's Rules, which is your guiding parameters for how you conduct your meetings. Um, and then tonight we wanted to talk about my other handout that I gave you is from the charter. And this is the planning commission's roles and responsibilities, powers and duties and functions. So we wanted to touch on that tonight. But just staying focused on the work plan, um, we want to come to you in December and give you some training on the new comprehensive plan. Some of you were part of the study sessions when we were considering the comp plan, but not all of you were on. And so Jeff Brazel, the director who you heard from tonight, um, can come in December and give you a background on the new comprehensive plan. If that sounds good. And then in January, um, we'd like, so you can see the pattern here. We're just taking advantage of your regular meetings and adjourning to study session to provide this training, um, if this model works for you. Um, training on the land development code. So we're in the process of updating the land development code. We have a consultant that's on board and we have drafts of the full code. Um, we're in the process right now of reviewing the land development procedures. And we've already reviewed the other modules, which are like the zone district parameters, the parking, the landscaping, the signage. Um, and we want to give the commission a background on what the land development code does. Because the consultant's gonna come out at the end of January, so this would be a special meeting on January twenty-eighth where the consultant would come and give you a full iteration of what's changing in the new land development code. Um, and then we'd follow up with a study session to talk about what you learned and what your thoughts are about some of those changes on February fourth. We'd collect, we'd provide you the full draft of the land development code and then you'd have a month to review that before we collected your comments in March. And then um April twenty-first would be a joint study session with city council on the land development code where the consultant would come back out and you'd have more opportunities to ask questions and provide feedback on the land development code. Before you have a public hearing um in May of next year. And then city council would hear the land development code in June and second reading in July so that it became effective on August first. Um, later in the summer, we know we want to tackle the Derby Master Plan. So that's something that we've just put out there in very rough terms to tackle that in summer. And then the last thing in summer and fall, um, end of summer into fall would be tackling the legislative rezoning. So in association with the land development code, there's a legislative rezoning where we take the actual zone districts and change them to the new zone districts in the code. Um, so there will be a time period when we'll have the old zone districts and the new zone districts living in the code together until we can legislative really rezone those properties. So you know how you saw rezoning tonight of just one property? Think of in a rezoning large parts of the city to new zone districts. Um, so it's a, we need to do lots of public outreach with that. Um, we need to reach out to business owners and property owners. Um, we're talking about eliminating, potentially eliminating the PUDs and going to straight zoning. So fully developed neighborhoods could go to straight zones instead of PUD zoning. So it's a big deal. And we want to do it right and we want to do a lot of outreach to the community. So very roughly, that's what we've put for fall of twenty twenty-five. So that kind of gets you through. And if there's things that the commission would like more training on or more discussion, um, we can add that to this work plan. You can always have special meetings on off nights. Um, if it's too much to handle on your regular meeting, you only meet once a month. Um, and a lot of planning commissions meet twice a month. So, you know, we can always fit that in on another Tuesday evening. So how does that sound? How does, what what are your thoughts about the work plan?
And so, so both of you are aware is that I emailed everybody on the commission individually to 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 recap our conversation to the email that you had sent out. So I was asking to everyone if similar to our discussion, if there were gaps that they felt relative to just our powers and duties, but any other training to try to level set the group to get everyone up to speed because we all have different backgrounds. We all have different level of expertise related to this, these processes. So I thought it would be good just to open it up to the group. Because, yeah, we have a lot of new commissioners that this is their first rodeo going down this path. So it'd be nice to hear what we need to do to get everybody up to speed. Because I, I think there's been some feedback where like the incoming training is very minimal. And then you kind of get asked to go to a case and you're like, oh, what am I really doing? And I think sometimes the conversation in the meetings, it gets off track because yes, there's allusions to it in the language of what the LVC says, but what our actual curfew is, what we're actually analyzing.
Like on the different development cases, like what do you do on rezoning? What do you do on plating?
Right.
Yeah.
Because it's, because it's looking through even as I was doing this, thinking about this meeting tonight, looking at what the actual land development code says. And it was just the process of how the developer comes with the development plan. It comes to the staff and then you do a report. So it's like, what should we be seeing in the report? Like, what should we be looking at the report? What's the information that we should be referring to to make sure that this the thing is valid? Because yes, we want to take into account of residents' concern, but we also need to be fair to future development in the city because it's going to impact people that are many, many years from now. I mean, no one that's involved in it. So it's to have a, to be fair to the process, to be fair to the developers, but also to be fair to residents. Sorry, I kind of was a wood in there, but that was.
I agree with you. I think training would be. I think.
Yeah, when you like this list. Seems like something.
Even if we add like an extra day in the month, like I would be absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, so would I. I mean, if we need to, but I think it's nice because city staff, I understand already are so busy as well. Then doing it after our scheduled meetings is good, but if that's not going to be enough time, that adding extra days, I think to fill in gaps, I'm not at all opposed to.
Okay, that's great. Um, so maybe what we need to add is a training session on the different types of land use cases that come before you and what you're specifically looking at in, you know, a rezoning or a plat or a PUD.
And role and responsibility because we, you know, I would like to know it's, you know, that this is actually what you are being tasked with doing.
And what's interesting, sorry to cut you off, it's in the, because it's going to be a two-step process, especially since there's going through potential encapsulation for the zoning. So it's in interim.
Yeah.
Because you have a mass jumble of PUDs and all of that, so like.
Right.
But then what the future.
What the future looks like. Well, and there's another type of land development application that isn't coming to you now that will in the future, which is called the preliminary plat. So right now, sometimes you see plats and that's when city council calls them up for approval. What we're proposing in the new code is that final plats will not go to council, but preliminary plats will always go to planning commission and city council. Developers really like that because the problem with having the potential of calling up a final plat at the very end of the process when they've already done the engineering and the construction documents is that it becomes very risky for them. They've spent a lot of engineering dollars to do those full designs only to potentially have the council turn it down. So the, the developers would much rather have a preliminary plat that does not have all the engineering associated, but still has the layout and configuration of lots be subject to the public hearing. And so, and that's much more typical to what other cities do. Yeah. Your book might be helpful. Well, yes. Um, so I found this, The Job of the Planning Commissioner. We can order copies of this. This is a publication. This is probably an outdated one. I found this on someone's bookshelf, um, the former planning manager. Um, but this is produced by APA. And so we could get, we can order copies of this for you, which really talk about um what different types of land uses are, what a planning commissioner's job is, non-conformities. There's lots of great information in here. Um, what zoning is, what plats are. Um, so if this would be helpful, um, I'm happy to, you know, give this to whoever wants to look at it now, but um we can order copies of this as well.
Yeah, I'd just think get a copy of it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great. Um, okay, so just to fit everything in, and in terms of um looking forward into training on the comp plan and training on the land development code that we anticipated in December and January. It almost feels like we need another meeting in there to do this training on different types of land uses, roles and responsibilities. Um, or we could potentially try to fit it in when we're talking to you about the land development code. Um, and talk about, okay, here's, because it's in context of what the land development code does and what your job is on those different types of land use cases. So we could blend that together.
I have a question just relative to upcoming cases.
Yeah.
Is there, are there, just to help inform them, are there any cases? Trying to get asked this question. Is there any training that would be helpful to have in one of those cases?
Cases. So coming up, we have a conditional use permit. Um, and I know you don't see those very often. Um, that's going to be coming at the December third planning commission meeting. It's a pretty small one. Um, of course, I can't go into the detail because we're not advertised for that public hearing. Um, but that conditional use permit would be coming to you in December. And then we've got a PUD amendment and then um an annexation zoning. So that's what's coming to you in December. So if it would be helpful, we could have a later, another meeting later in November.
I think that would be helpful just related to those case types.
Those case types.
I believe, I believe you all don't know what you don't know. So you don't know, like what training I need. Well, I don't know what training I need because I don't even know what I don't know.
Because I haven't come up against what I don't know yet, but all three of those things would be very helpful to know what our role would be in addressing those three.
Okay, so November twelfth and November nineteenth are available dates. We normally have board of adjustments on November twelfth, but we don't have any cases this month. And we normally have Derby on November nineteenth, but we're not going to have a Derby meeting. So would you prefer the twelfth next week or would you prefer the nineteenth?
I would as well. I think there's something happening on the twelfth. I think it's actually.
Veteran's Day is the eleventh.
Is the.
Yeah, Veteran's Day is the eleventh, then it doesn't give us much time to prepare. So, okay.
I'm unavailable on the nineteenth, but I don't feel that I, I don't feel that I need to necessarily attend. And if it's a recorded session, I can.
You can listen.
Yeah, I can't. I can't do.
You can't do the, you can't do the twelfth. Okay.
But I think what would be helpful too, because since.
I can't do either date, actually. Can we do twenty, twenty-six?
The only thing is that's like Thanksgiving week. So does that, I mean, I've available.
That's the date before Thanksgiving.
But it's the, it's two days before Thanksgiving. I just didn't know if people would be traveling.
No, I'll be in town.
I'll be here as well.
So is the twenty-sixth the better date?
Should we?
I guess the twenty-sixth.
Thanksgiving is the twenties, it's twenty eighth, yeah.
It's two days.
Are you traveling?
I was looking at this wrong. I, I, I can do the nineteenth. I can't do the one before Thanksgiving. I'll be out of town.
That's the twenty-sixth.
The nineteenth. Yeah, twenty-sixth.
He can't do. He could do the nineteenth. He can't do the nineteenth. Can you?
I think I can do the nineteenth, yeah.
I could, you could. So it looks like the nineteenth would just be you, Garrett, who's, and you can watch it. You don't need it as much as maybe because.
My wife's birthday, she might have.
He knows more than all of us. Yeah, that's, that's pretty important.
Yeah, that is important.
I guess.
Well, if you only have one wife, you gotta keep her out.
Back to your point about the, the next few meetings and what's coming up, isn't that something we could do going forward though, instead of just
Sure.
Just for the, the next few meetings?
Yeah.
Because then we could prep, even if we don't have the specifics, we could at least look up information and have a bit more time to, to look at stuff.
Well, and we can make it comprehensive on the nineteenth where we talk to you. I mean, you know, there's only so many types of cases that you see.
Right, okay.
Rezonings, PUDs, conditional use permits, and now you'll see preliminary plots. Um, in some cities, the, the site development plans come to um the planning commission, but here we do those administratively. So in terms of the things we need to train you on, there's just a handful.
Okay.
So we could go over, we just happen to have a good menagerie of them coming up in December.
Okay, it might be helpful also if you would tell us, since you seem to know a little bit further, even though you can't tell us specific cases. If you say a potential um PUD amendment next month, a potential plating next month, and then we would know, okay, then that's something that I would know to prepare for.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even before, yeah, even before, and then when we get the specifics, it'd be like, okay, this is.
Yeah, that's what's coming. And we generally know about a month in advance of what's coming down the pipeline. So we can share with you. Plus you can also plan your evening, you know, um, if we've got multiple cases. Which we've, we've done pretty well with just having one single case here the last couple of times, but in August, you know, we had a big, long agenda um to get through. So right now, we're kind of on track to not have as many. Um, and just have one or two. Um, and these ones are pretty small. They're not big cases. So. Okay, um, so that sounds like a good plan. Um, in general, um, so the chair and I did talk about this um works plan ahead of time and kind of formulated it together as, as, as a team. Um, but how is the rest of the commission feeling about this? As a rough outline, again, as we get into twenty twenty-five, we'll massage these dates. Uh, but we've got a lot to tackle with the land development code early in the year.
And I'm fine with having this at least set this way and being, you know, flexible. Exactly.
Okay.
One of the other things, just so you all are aware, is that my term is coming up in, in March of twenty-five. And I would like to continue on, but there's no guarantee that that is going to happen relative to I just to set the table for you all to, to help you, you may be successful, but if I'm a little reasonable here.
Probably not.
What, what, is there a terming out of commissioners or something?
I don't know if there's term limits. Um, I did not see that in the charter.
Yeah, it's, it's two, it's two, it's two terms.
Is it two terms? Two terms? And how long are the terms?
So I'm in my, I'm in my first term. It's just there's been some commissioners here recently where they come at the end of their first term and then work on to the second.
Okay.
So there's been some turnover relative.
If you fill a partial term, does that count against you or do you get to do two full terms?
I don't know how that works. So there, there's another, because I've asked that relative to me. If you look at the roster, that it knows that I'm on my third term, but they were using that to note that I was under the previous.
You were on a partial term.
Well, I was, I was brought in under the previous regulations where there weren't.
Oh, where there weren't term limits. Okay.
So it's everyone else is new relative to the two terms.
Okay.
Where did the term limits come from? Is this a council thing or was this part of the bylaws?
I think it, there was, there was a poll out, if I remember this correctly. It was to all of the members of all of the boards to ask their feeling on it. And then that helped to inform the city council and I think city council took action on it. I believe I could be totally incorrect, but when I, that's when I started and I didn't know what the heck. Can we try and put that one out? I mean, I'd like to.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check on the term limits and figure that out for you. Okay, um, so the other thing we wanted to tackle tonight was to talk about your roles and responsibilities. So your other handout is from the charter and I'll just give you a second to peruse that. So basically what it's talking about in the charter and planning commissions are created as an entity in the state statutes and that says planning commissions can be formed for the purposes, the primary purpose is to enact and adopt and amend the comprehensive plan. But also that they can be in charge of things like water plans, um, housing, demographics, transportation plans. Um, and also in charge of land development applications. So our charter goes into more detail and talks about making recommendations for, um, you know, blighted areas for hiring consultants. That's kind of unique. Usually that's done in conjunction with city manager's office. Um, so we don't typically consult with the planning commission in terms of hiring consultants, but that's an option for us. Um, the major street plan, that's the transportation master plan, so that is underway right now. And I should probably add that to our work session, um, because you will have a role in the transportation master plan. Um, but your primary job is the comprehensive plan in land development cases. And to make recommendations. Some cities give authority to the planning commission for certain types of land development applications. Here, everything goes on to city council. So you're purely a recommending body for, um, for land development applications. And again, the types, you don't see annexation, um, you see the zoning associated with the annexation, but not the question of whether the property should be annexed. That's left to the city council. Um, you see PUDs, planned unit developments, you see conditional use permits. There's another type of use permit that's called a limited use permit, and um, that right now goes to the Board of Adjustment. But in the future, that's going to be administrative is what we're suggesting. So those are small things. So the difference would be like a conditional use permit would be a daycare center in a residential neighborhood. Versus a used by permit might be a bed and breakfast that's being proposed. Um, so your purview is, is as defined in the charter and um, as defined in the state statute. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just questioning item five, how would that work out in practice? Clearing out slum districts, is that just a very old archaic term?
You know, I think we have an urban renewal authority now, so that group really takes more of that role.
Yeah.
This, the charter was probably written before there was a U R A.
You know, that's interesting, is that there, you've never really had, since I've been involved, there was never really a discussion to these points. And it's, I think that's why sometimes, times the conversation will get a little off the rails, it's, it's not related to this is what we're doing. So we get caught up in extraneous minor details. That's not necessarily what we need to be discussing. It may be of more to the case, and that might be addressed somewhere else within the planning process.
Right.
But it's just, I think some people, sometimes people feel they need to, if they're concerned, it's, it's, it takes away from the, the meeting and the flow of the meeting. You get caught up in those, those details.
Well, I think something else to talk about too is the use of those binders. So we have a lot of the L D C stuff in those binders, and I know it's overwhelming when you're getting a lot of information at once, and we had BOB's rules and and then, you know, the binders and everything, but we might want to take a moment when we're doing some of this training to go through those binders, see how they function, and also we're happy to add more stuff. So having this page in that binder and maybe little summaries of what the different types of things you're reviewing are in the binders, little blurbs, you know, we can add anything you want to those that would be helpful.
What about the, the information in the binder just being presented to us? I mean, uh, while we're up there, we don't have time to look through our binder.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, could we just have?
You can absolutely take them home with you, we just printed them out, but our thought process was not everyone's going to remember to bring them in, and if you want to check in the moment, like what is a PUD, and you want to look at that blurb, or what they also have is the summaries of the approval criteria in there.
How about just an electronic copy of the binder, so that I could, you know, reference that at home?
Yep.
Yes, certainly something we've looked at.
I always thought, why are they coming so quickly to get that binder? It's like someone got in trouble with, you know, that I don't see anything.
Commit it to memory now, don't, don't do anything, don't take it with you.
Yeah. I'm collecting your binder.
Okay.
I didn't, didn't make you, didn't mean to make you feel rushed.
No, you didn't, it's just, just saying, and, and it's not even tonight, it's just, you know, it's always been a, a real, um, uh, specifically, like, I got to get the binders, like, it's so important.
Yeah.
I'm not going to steal it, is this some sort of private information?
No, it's definitely not private. Our thought process is just, uh, binders have been given out at other meetings, and then
And never came back.
They never came back, and then the people are saying, well, we don't have the information.
Yeah, and I need a binder.
Yeah.
Give me another binder.
So our thought process was that it would be more helpful in the moment, but I think an electronic version is a great idea.
Yeah.
We can work with Elizabeth, she put those binders together for us.
Okay. And the charter, I mean, this is, I just got this online, so you can peruse this anytime. Um, and the reference to the state statute where planning commission is created is right there at the bottom, that thirty-one, twenty-three, two oh one. So you can read through that as well. You can just do a Google search on Colorado State Statute and type that in, and it'll take you right to that section. Um.
All the comp plans and the L D C and everything is also online too, so maybe what's helpful is getting a list of hyperlinks or something. We could talk about that to figure out during that training what would be helpful.
Yeah, I think once you've seen the new land development code, um, you're really going to be experts on, okay, here's the types of cases that we see, here's the, the review criteria are going to be streamlined. So we won't have as many different criteria for different types of, of, um, development plans or zoning. Um, so it's going to be much more streamlined for you as well. What gets more complicated is the zone districts and all the development standards. But to some extent, you only see that when you're contemplating a rezoning. Um, that's up to staff to make sure that all the zone district standards are complied with when we're looking at a development plan or a subdivision plot. So it gives you an appreciation for what the planners do every day. You know, they're handling upwards of twenty to twenty-five to thirty cases at a time, each of our planners. And there are various stages of application, or first or second or third round of review, or getting to public hearing. And they're looking at all of those dimensional standards for different types of applications. So it gets quite complex.
Slightly off topic, but um, is there, uh, often anything that would come to the planning commission that is not being supported by a planning, um, department?
Well, interesting that you ask that, because since Jeff Brazel and I came, we've talked about, you know, why aren't we doing staff recommendations? Um, a formal recommendation to say staff recommends approval of this or approval with conditions. And apparently there was a time period where staff was directed to not provide recommendations. But we're moving away from that, and in the future, you will likely see staff recommends approval of this with conditions. Um, the tricky thing is, we've got lots of development applications in process. And so if we haven't telegraphed to an applicant early on that we're not going to support them, then it's kind of pulling the rug out from under them at the last minute to say, oh, you're going to hearing now, you've been in process for a year and a half, and now we're not going to recommend approval. And they're thinking, well, why, why didn't you tell me that when I first applied?
Right.
So, you know, we're looking back at cases and saying, what's the city council doing? You know, sometimes city council is saying, we don't want to convert commercial to residential. Um, and so we're looking at active cases right now and saying, do we have others that are proposing what we know city council isn't happy with? Um, or especially for the ones that we're just getting as a pre-app, a pre-application, we're looking very hard at those. And saying, okay, we're hearing council say this, or the new comprehensive plan says this. And this pre-application is proposing a type of development that isn't supported by what we're, we're seeing in the comp plan or by city council, um, or by the planning commission. And so therefore, we're going to tell that applicant at the very first time they come in the door, which is the pre-application, that we don't support their application. That's the right way to do it.
But at this point, we are telling you that there have already been, um, issues with such in the past.
Exactly, and they have every right, you know, it's always tricky as a staff person, because even if you're not supporting something, you still have to take it through the process. So you still have to provide the comments, you still have to be diligent and attentive to them, and take it to hearing, and then recommend denial. Um, where I used to be in Board of Adjustment, we did that all the time. We helped the applicants through to get their variance application. But then we had a very strict policy about not supporting very many variances. And so we turn around and recommend denial, and they felt so betrayed, like you were so helpful, and then you recommend, it's like, but we told you the whole time that we weren't going to support it.
Yeah.
And they, but they were thinking, well, we're going to be the one case that's the exception, and of course, staff's going to support us. And it's like, no. We told you we weren't going to support it from the beginning, but we're going to help you through and get your application, and you have every right to be heard and to go through the process.
There's a lot of pending land use cases there on C's website. I'm allowed to review those, that's not ex parte information, right?
Pending land use cases?
Yeah, the community development website, I can see a lot of like, oh, anytime something gets posted publicly, I can go on the website and see that.
Yeah, and you can go to Central Square and peruse. We're actually coming up with a new thing, which is going to be a map that shows, that pinpoints all the different development applications that are going on in the city. And you'll be able to click on that and see, oh, there's an active development plan for this pri- project. There's a lot of stuff that you don't see because we have a lot of administrative authority, um, but you'll be able to see those applications. Um, no, and to answer your question, what, what you want to be cautious of is prejudging the case.
Okay.
And making us, making judgments about the project based on what you were informed of outside of the public hearing.
Okay.
You want to gain all your information in the public hearing and make your judgment about the case in the public hearing.
Okay.
Um, because you never know what information you're going to hear from the public or from your fellow commissioners that could influence your decision. So just always come into that public hearing with an open mind.
Okay.
Um, even if you've read about the case, or even if you've read the staff report and the packet that we provided you, come into that public hearing with an open mind.
I go just look it up and see what's coming up and coming down the road kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, the fact, knowing the fact that it exists is fine, it's getting that extra information is when you start getting into that next part two territory.
There'd be one point of feedback. Kind of status, to not be case-specific. Relating, relating to cases similar to PUDs, where that information's not included in the packet that comes to us. That sometimes I feel is a little bit short in the information that we're being asked, the packets coming to us. We understand that you all have done the review, but it's for us to double check to to ask the questions relative to it, whether it's a rezoning or whatever or not. Like, we might be having a rezoning, but then there's that information related, relative to the rezoning of that parcel.
Hmm.
To get on, saying it would be the backup material related, because it's in the, the report. It's just the recommendations, but there's not the, the actual development document tied to that action.
Mm-hmm.
So in some, some instances, I feel what we're missing.
Well, and it's tricky, because like for tonight, for instance, the, the applicant showed you their development plan.
Right.
Because they were trying to give you a sense of, okay, we're asking for a rezoning, but this is really what we want to do, how we want to build this. Um, it helped inform the decision.
Right.
But the development plan was not subject to your decision tonight. So only the re, the question of the rezoning was your decision tonight.
But would there be a table relative to the zoning compliance for bulk information? Like, that's captured in the, in their development document?
So I think the point she's trying to make is that a lot of the information they gave you wasn't really part of what you were supposed to be considering for what was actually being asked of you.
Correct, but it would be of the rezoning. So what they're asking in the rezoning, that's relative to us, isn't it? It would not, not of the development, but it would be of the criterion of the meeting the development of the rezoning. So it'd be of the bulk information. So setbacks, is that not on our?
It wasn't, it's not part of your purview.
Okay.
Um, the question that was before you tonight is, should this property be rezoned? And does it meet the criteria for rezoning? We got into the detail because they showed you the detailed plan. Um.
That's not actually the question being presented, though. And so that kind of goes back to the training you've asked for about what are you really looking at under each thing, and I think that is a good thing for us to talk about, because yeah, you want to think, is this a good development? But that's not always what you're actually being asked in the moment.
Correct, yeah, correct.
And showing us their landscaping on all that, that, nothing to do with, uh, anything we were.
But it helped address the neighbors' concerns.
It did. And I'm sorry that there was only one neighbor there tonight, because it sounds like more had been in the past that would have.
Yeah, we, I'm hesitant to get too much into the details of the case. I'm trying to keep it high level and talk more in generalities. Um.
Well, and they do have a chance to come back when this goes first to the council.
Right.
So that was my whole thing is.
She can get more neighbors to come when it comes to council.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, we should keep it general then.
Yeah, anyone could have, you know, so I mean, even if a lot of people don't show up, we might have one impression of what any community feels about a project. And so, you know, at that point, we might go ahead and recommend, but then at city council, there might be, they might get more information or different information. I think that's a good idea that that could occur.
So back to this, just about the specifics of the development, I'm just trying to think of this as just a, I'm in a general, in a general way, not a specific way, about not it being a good development, it being a proper development where it meets this.
It's up to staff to check, to make sure it meets all the.
Not, not to say, not, we're not, not to redline their, their documents. But in what they're asking in that zoning, is it appropriate without illustrating?
So you have to, you have to think about it as, would I, would I approve this rezoning to allow any multifamily? Because once this is rezoned, they could walk away and never build that. And someone else could come in with something else and meet the provisions of R three and build according to the code.
I guess it would be a, a diagram of saying what the setbacks would be overlaid on that parcel, or is that not?
Well, I mean, I think you can ask things about setbacks because you, or open space or provisions. Because you're asking, what does the zone district allow?
Right.
So we can answer that and say the zone district would allow these setbacks or this open space. Because you're asking the pertinent, pertinent things related to the zoning. Just not this development plan.
And I guess I'm just asking because I'm a visual person, so it's to see the graphic representation of.
And it's great, and what's before you is a development, but the question you're actually being asked is is this a good place for this zone district? And so I think she makes a great point where what if that developer walked away and someone else came and did everything all the way to the absolute top of the limits of what's allowed for that zone district?
Yes.
Is that zone district okay for that location? That's all.
That's what I'm asking is, is for that parcel, the constraints of the setbacks relative to.
Yeah, you almost want a diagram is what you're saying.
Yeah, a tiny diagram, not, not their design.
Here's the building envelope that you can build within.
What's the constraints, and then what's the F A, F A R and related to that parcel of property? So you're saying that you're.
Or related to that zone district.
That zone district, so you just have that.
On that property.
On that property, that, to your point, this developer walks away, but then we're approving that, hey, you can build X stories high with setbacks like this, how does that fit into that?
It's almost like a bulk plane analysis.
Yeah, where we get the, we get the map, but it's not the framework of how that, those parts.
Right.
And most things that have come through are related to PUDs, so that's already adjudicated out, and it's, it's in that, and so it's minor tweaks to it. But it's just, things are going to this land development.
Yeah, and we'll see more, we hope to see more straight zoning in the land development code. We're creating zone districts to entice developers to do straight zoning and move away from PUDs. Um, and so, and once we do the legislative rezoning, then we'll see even fewer PUDs, because we won't be amending PUDs, we'll be under the straight zones, um, under the new code. But what you're saying is, when you, when we come forward with the rezoning application, provide some kind of bulk plane analysis to say. Provide some kind of bulk plane analysis to say, this is what the zoning would allow on this property.
Right. Because it's similar to how you're saying there'll be an initial plat. That's coming to us. It would be that. It's not necessarily the design of that parcel, but it's the the constraints of what that parcel will allow. To give.
Yeah, and a preliminary plat's different because that's going to show you the lotting layout of the subdivision.
Even there, it would be the designers, their constraints prior to that. So some of this. Parcel has this constraints related to, so that's approved.
Yeah, I would just like to clarify that preliminary plats are just a possibility as the L D C's not been amended at this point, but yeah.
Yeah, I was just throwing that out. It's just in thinking of the design process of what that.
If I was to mock a building, trying to figure out what it would be.
So this is kind of off base, but just the. Code changes that you're talking about, is that subject to council approval or what's the problem?
So what we've got is this joint city council planning commission study session in April. And then you'd have the public hearing before planning commission on May sixth. And then I don't have the the dates in here, but city council. Would have public hearings on the adoption of the land development code in June. First reading and then July second reading and then the code could become effective on August first.
Be somewhat similar to the short term plan.
Right.
Process where y'all look at it first and then give feedback and then that's all communicated to council.
And five years later.
Yeah.
More like the short term rental.
Maybe not that similar.
More like the short term rental where it's a code amendment that we're doing and it's going to city council. So, yeah.
Adam, can you ask me when the state legislature tries to preempt our local control and they change, try to change zoning at a legislative level? How do we gauge city council's interest in saying, no, we're not going to surrender our local control. We want to. Fight this as long as we possibly can without.
So things like ADUs. I mean, this, the Colorado municipal league has lobbying entities. And they lobby the state legislature on behalf of municipalities. And usually homeroom municipalities all feel similarly about things. And so lately, this, the state legislature has been passing lots of legislation. To preempt local governments and say things like you must allow ADUs. That's their latest. There's more housing regulations that they're coming forward with to Prop one twenty three. To allow affordable housing. So they, there's a transit oriented development, one that says you have to maximize the density around T O D. So usually what happens is the Colorado municipal league lobbies on behalf of their minute, their member municipalities. And tries to fight the state legislature or modify the language in those laws before they get adopted. And then soften the blow. Homeroom, homeroom municipalities are not subject to the state law in all ways that a statutory city is. So statutory cities follow the state law. In, because they don't have their own regulations and they don't have homeroom status. Well, they they don't have as many regulations. As homeroom municipalities. So we try.
Okay, so we can, you know, kick our feet and drag it out as long as we can, as possibly as we can.
They, the city can battle it, but it's much better if it's united voices. From like the Colorado municipal league saying the cities and counties in Colorado don't support this. And sometimes. They get modifications to the language before it gets adopted.
Will any of that be coming up with our current land development code, like transportation oriented development?
Well, um, not the T O D. We're not, uh, we only have one transit station. There is more language in there about mixed uses and more mixed and. There is language in there about accessory dwelling units. So ADUs are now going to be allowed per the state statute. In the new land development code is what's contemplated.
Okay.
So we have to, or just things like. The hallucinogenic mushrooms, that's a new one. So we have to, you'll be seeing that in December. A code amendment for, to allow those natural healing centers to allow. The the hallucinogenic mushrooms, because that was a state law. And so we can't prohibit them all out.
Okay.
We have to allow them in limited fashion.
Okay.
Or things like marijuana, you know, when that was legalized. So it it does get tricky. Sometimes it's preempting HOAs. So HOAs, you know, can't regulate and say you can't do Zurich landscaping in your front yard. The state law has preempted that to say HOAs can't can't limit people from doing Zurich landscaping.
Or from gardens.
Or our own businesses. That's another new one.
And our city also passed a law saying we can allow Zurich landscaping too, right?
Right.
Okay.
So it gets complicated, the layers of government.
Wow. I think we'll be busy. But I look forward to it. I mean.
Yeah. Well, this is a great group and we appreciate your diligence and your attentiveness and your eagerness to learn.
In order to be effective, that's really what we need, I think, is some education. Otherwise, it's almost a pointless thing if we just sit up there and say yes or no and don't even know what we're answering yes or no to.
Right. Well, you ask good questions and that's great. So keep it up.
Are there any planning commissioner trainings outside of Commerce City that we could attend that you guys keep an eye out for us and offer us? Possibly go into them?
So the the American Planning Association is having its national conference in Denver this spring. It's end of March, beginning of April. It's like the last two days of March and the first two days of April. So that's a huge opportunity that we don't often get to have that that state. Or that national conference. And oftentimes there's sessions that are applicable to planning commission. So we can definitely see if there's opportunities there. There's another opportunity, the Rocky Mountain Land Use Institute is. It's the. It's like the first or second week.
Have some videos.
Rocky Mountain Land Use Institute.
That might be an easier one to access. They're in March as well, I think.
Yeah, they're in March. So we can get you, there can, and there's also training. Episodes that we can do like webinars through the American Planning Association. And like I said, this book that's published by the American Planning Association. So there are resources out there that we can, we can connect you with. So thanks for asking.
And I certainly don't want to discourage anyone from learning all of this. But I think also part of, like we said with that training is just. Really honing in on what is the question being presented to you? Because no one's expecting you to be a whole on professional planner. Know everything that they're doing. Like you said, you have your different areas of expertise. So I think remembering too, what is it that you're really being asked?
I have one last ask. If we can capture what we talk about through these sessions, because I would think that would be helpful to train. Next person that comes in and that would be. Everly. The manual for. How this process works here and this is what's.
Like an orientation outline kind of for new commissioners?
So how, we have, this just as a handout, there's the, the. The binder, but there's, if there's any other training that happens, just to gain that training to get it into one resource. So that when someone comes in, that's available to them because that.
Yes.
There will be people in the future and things will change, but to at least help them level set earlier.
And we can do, I mean, obviously we're going to do kind of a full training session with everyone, but if we have a new. Planning commissioner, we can do separate orientation sessions with that person or people individually and get them caught up to speed.
It seems like we're developing a good training plan here and we waste total time.
Yeah, we don't want to lose that.
What else?
Great feedback. Thank you. Is it still snowing out there?
It's stopped.
It stopped. Okay. It's good. Haven't been out since eight o'clock this morning.
So did we decide on? November?
Nineteen. Yeah, November nineteen.
Six o'clock.
Um, yeah, six o'clock at that work. And we'll send that out to the full commission because we've got a couple of folks that aren't here tonight. Okay. Are you adjourned?
The time is eight twenty two. The study session is adjourned.
Great. Thank you so much, everyone.
Oh, thank you.
What's that?
Very productive.
Oh, good. Most of it is directed to her, so.